So it is eight thirty and I'll call the regular council meeting of June eleventh to order. There is an agenda that's in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda? Counselor Poots?
Can we just do a update on our FCM conference that we just attended?
Okay, so nine point one, FCM conference. Give everyone a chance to comment who was there. Any other additions? Counselor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. I saw that nod, Counselor McGee. We have the regular meeting minutes from May the twenty eighth have been circulated. Are there any errors or corrections, additions? If not? Counselor Cunningham?
I'll move to approve the minutes of May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty four as presented. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, first order of business is going to be five point three point one, which is Protective Services Report. And Mr. Gannon, do you know who's cacking that or should we? Okay. Thank you, and anytime you're ready. Welcome, Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Reeve, and counsel. I'm just, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just gonna pull up the report here.
Thank you, Reeve, and counsel. Good morning, and Ms. Crossfield sends her regrets for not being able to present this today. As regularly, our department provides counsel with an update of level of effort and items that are happening within our Protective Services portfolio. This report in itself gives our statistical analysis for for those those levels of effort. It also indicates the community priorities set by council, which is rural crime prevention, community safety focus, presence in rural communities, road safety, partnering with knee hill CPOs, enforcement, education, and engagement. Through through the sections, you can see the information provided statistically. Enforcement within Hill County citations, we had sixteen warnings and two violation tickets, eight animal control files, twenty one other bylaw files, two school events, bike rodeos in Acme, Trosu and Linden, PCA. Two assist, or sorry, seven assist with other department public hearing attendance, one documented, service fire band sign flips, and as you can see, other items. Within contracted municipalities, we charge for hours through the contracted contracts that we have. Thirteen contracted files, bylaw files, and forty two contracted patrol hours. Road ban reports, sixty five targeted patrols, and twelve trucks were stopped, three had overweight exemption permits, and nine were empty. Fourteen exception permits were approved through the Transportation Department totaling approval of five hundred and forty overweight exempted loads on various banned roads. Emergency management has been very busy within the department lately. Hosted three knee hill regional emergency management agency meetings. Hosted an instant command system two hundred course, thirteen attendees, which is exceptional to be able to have that level of training within the organization and within surrounding communities. Continue work with the organization on the Business Continuity Plan, which is an ongoing task that we're doing. Deploy all hands on deck presentation at the all staff day and from, unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but I hear it went exceptionally well. Emergency preparedness week was from May fifth to eleventh. Municipal within our region shared important preparedness information with residents on social media. So there was a form of marketing program out there to ensure individuals understood our emergency management program or how to be safe. Numerous workshops and training sessions were being planned over the next couple of months, and we're continuously working on the development of staff and the program. Fire services in January to May fifteenth hosted two fire chief committee meetings. Those are regular meetings, and it's a great opportunity for collaboration between all the fire chiefs. Held spring preparedness meetings with the fire chiefs on drought conditions and farmers helping with equipment. We issued a joint news release on this and shared it amongst all municipalities in the area. Repairs, the Trosu tender, a hundred percent owned by knee hill county was repaired and was back in service at the end of April. Pump training and station visits, which are very crucial to the operation, were were conducted and intended by one of Carbon and and Three Hills practices to go over pump operations, sorry. Acme tender has been ordered through canoe purchasing system for seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. This purchase was completed in collaboration with the Village of Acme and the Acme Fire Department. Three Hills and the Hill County engine, thirty seventy split. Final inspection at the manufacturing plant is to be completed in mid-June, expected delivery by the end of summer. There's been fire, nine fire investigations under the Fire Safety Code, six fire inspections under the Fire Safety Code. And that's the report as presented. If there's any questions I can answer, I'll do my best. If not, I'll, we'll do our best to get the information for counsel.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Christie?
Curiosity on the Trosu tender repairs. That was deterioration because of sitting too long with with chlorine? Or is is there a procedure there that can extend that if you move that water or something?
Thank you through the chair. The exact of that item, I'm sorry, I don't know at this time. But from what I understand through conversations with with the department, there's been some pumping concerns that's been regular. I'd have to verify that this is the one in question.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Reeve Whitstone?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gannon, just a curiosity question. On the overweight loads, we had exempt some of these, but they are, the exemption is still only to the hundred percent, the capacity of the vehicle. Am I correct in that?
I'll pass that off to Mr. Zier.
Mr. Zier?
Thank you. Through the chair, that's correct, Deputy Reeve. We allow overweight exemption permits for ag industry primarily on our banned roads up to a hundred percent, no more than that. Just referring to that, it's a really good program that was brought forward here. We got really good feedback from our agriculture producers out there, allowing them to service some of their landlocked properties that that they have in the past there. So really good feedback that we received through that program.
I was fairly certain that was the case, but I just wanted to check.
Counselor Penner?
Just for clarification, the Three Hills, Neale County engine, is that the percentage, Three Hills is thirty and where seventy, or is it the other way around?
From what I understand, it is accurate as indicated.
Mr. Hogan?
Through Mr. Chair, to declare for that, we are the seventy, correct. I do apologize if I didn't answer that properly.
And that's now that we've gone to one engine that's shared between Three Hills and ourselves, are they still maintaining a second engine?
Through the chair, from what I understand is that the the second engine is still in operation right now, but is it is at the end of their lifespan, close to it.
Okay, so ultimately, what we'll have in the Three Hills Hall would be one engine that's shared between Neale County and the town of Three Hills. Mr. Hogan?
Through Ms. Reeve, that's that's correct. So when we entered into this discussion with the town, what was seen is that there was a one hundred percent owned unit for Neale County that went to Neale County or calls in the county. And then there was a almost identical unit that was one hundred percent owned by the town of Three Hills. And that only went to calls within the town. So that, given that they were both coming up on replacement, I think that was something really beneficial that the two councils did to split those costs seventy, you know, to split the cost to begin with. Seventy thirty is where we arrived at based, there's some call volume and stuff like that that ties into that. But ultimately, that that saved each municipality a few hundred thousand dollars. So I think that was a good, a good partnership for for the councils to to buy into.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions? First, Counselor Cunningham, and then I saw your hand, Counselor Christie.
So this might be a question for another day, might be a more comprehensive discussion. But I noted that we're providing thirteen contracted bylaw hours and forty two patrol hours to the municipalities. My understanding is we're working short-staffed with our peace officers right now, two out of our three. Do we ever feel that we are compromising the services to Neale County residents due to having those hours contracted out? Like, I guess going forward, I'm just wondering, like, do we have the manpower to be able to provide that contracted service to the other municipalities?
Thank you through the chair. We are evaluating those contracts at the moment and looking at those service level deliveries to ensure that the services are provided. From what I understand, from the manager of Protective Services, we are meeting the baseline of our services right now with some adaptations and prioritization within those services. So when they do enact a file, they do look at those priorities regardless if it's contracted or not and ensure the the these files that are are more of a danger or heightened aspect are managed in a priority versus some of the lower priority items. So I feel that it's being triaged appropriately for the staffing level at the moment. But we are definitely looking at what those service levels in the future could look look like and what those contractual options might be for council to consider.
Okay, thank you for that. Just as follow up, we do have, are we in a recruitment process at all or not? We're just standing pat with the two CPOs that we have, or are we looking for a third?
Thank you through the chair. We have one staff member that's on on the long term right now. So we're we're just waiting to see where that file goes. And right now, our contingency is for three staff members. So we're we're not in the recruitment process at this time, but we're definitely looking at different options for councils considering the future.
Okay, and again, just a bit of follow up. And correct me, I thought we'd had a conversation around potentially putting a officer into service even while we were waiting for, to find out what was happening with the officer that's on long term.
Through the chair, those are some conversations that are still happening in the background on if we can actually get somebody on a temporary basis or not. So we're exploring that. It's difficult to get a peace officer, period, for a full-time position, regardless of the location. And trying to find somebody that actually wants to do it on a term or contractual basis is a strategy that we're not sure is going to be incredibly successful, but we're still looking at that.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Christie?
Just a comment on the tenders that we have in our fleet now are far more capable than what we had ten years ago. So that somewhat offsets that extra engine that's not in the service. So it's just an observation.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions for Mr. Gannon regarding this report? Any other discussion? If not, what's the issue, counsel? Counselor Christie?
I'll make a motion to accept the Protective Services Report as information.
Okay, so we do have a motion to accept the Protective Services Report from June of twenty four as presented for information. Any further discussion? I'm not seeing any, so ask the question. All in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gannon. The next item on our agenda is six point one, which is policy sixteen dash two, county credit and fuel cards policy. Oh, she walked through the door as we're speaking. Welcome, Ms. Olson. Ashley, thank you for joining us today and whenever you're ready.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Raven Council. So today I am presenting a policy update for sixteen twelve, county credit and fuel cards. This policy has been reviewed and updated as per county policy review procedures, reflecting our commitment to efficient and responsible financial management. This reamp policy enhances our ability to meet business needs while maintaining fiscal responsibility. And changes include delegating authority to the CAO to authorize the issuance of credit cards as per business needs, removing the previous total corporate limit of forty thousand dollars, and refining the policy to focus more clearly on overarching policy goals. These adjustments will facilitate flexibility and responsiveness within our organization, ensuring that we continue to serve our community effectively. Are there any questions?
Okay, to this point, are there any questions? So I noticed that in the policy that it said that the standard spending limit would be five thousand, but there is room for the CAO to approve exceptions where necessary. And I assume there are some of our staff who need a much higher than five thousand limit and so they will, that will be authorized.
That is correct.
Yeah, I'm not naming names, but we know who we're talking about.
Coincidentally, there might be some staff members where they'd have a lower limit too.
Yeah, okay. Are there any questions with regard to the, Counsel Phobes, please?
I'm just curious to how many people have credit cards through the county?
You're, pardon me, you're speaking at the current moment?
Or in the future, when we're about to update this policy.
So I can, I can maybe speak to, to the future component. I don't know the number specifically off the top of my head that exists today.
Less than ten, I think it's about six to eight.
I would, six was in my head. So it's, it's not very many and that has caused, that's caused issues in, in the past. So the, in the future, what this policy does is it gives me the ability to say, okay, if it's, if it's expedient that that individual should have a card, we can get them a card. Because the other component that ties in, we might have those six, but with the corporate spending limit that, that Ms. Olson talked about earlier, if I was to, say, up Carolyn's limit, I need to reduce somebody else's because it has to fit within that forty thousand dollars that exists. Where now, basically, if it's expedient and makes sense for that person to have a card, then they can have a card within the confines and controls of the policy. And so the exact number of people that will have cards, we don't know the answer to that right now. It's not gonna be, it is not a scenario where not everybody at the county needs a card, so it's not that.
You mean you're not just gonna throw a bunch of cards on the table and say, have Okay, any other questions with regard to the new policy? Counsel McGee.
Not a question, but just a confirmation, requesting confirmation. The way I've understood the budget and, and the books, we are really good at paying on time and all of our residents can be really assured that responsible use of these cards are happening.
Ms. Olson.
Through the chair, that's correct. There actually are some vendors, we're noticing that they have a quicker turnaround for their payments, so this will allow us to help process those payments a little bit more efficiently.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions, discussion, comment? Counsel Penner.
And I'm not saying anybody on staff is trustworthy right now, but is it good business sense not to put in an approval limit of some kind? Just throwing it out there. You know, we're removing the forty thousand, shouldn't, shouldn't in the policy say a hundred thousand? I don't, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not sure.
Through the chair, if I may, we have policies, procedures in place that are going to mitigate some of that risk where we won't see the need of having that total authorized. So every credit card's gonna be going through an approval process where it has to go through their direct supervisor, their director, and then ultimately the CAO to determine whether or not that position truly has the need for a credit card. And then after that, their reconciliations will also be going through a similar process. Their supervisor's gonna be seeing their credit card reconciliation, what purchases are going through, and the CAO will also ultimately be signing off on those. We will also be conducting periodic audits. So there's a lot of controls in place after the fact to help us ensure that they are being used efficiently and we are able to mitigate some of those risks.
Okay, no, thank you for that clarification. I'm happy with removing it after I've heard what you had to say there, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comment? Deputy Reeve Whitstock.
Well, I would like to move the council approved the revised policy sixteen dash two county credit and fuel cards as presented.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Mr. Vanderkuul.
I just want to clarify, that's actually policy sixteen twelve, not two.
Okay. Oh, yes, that's correct. On our agenda it does say sixteen dash twelve. Thank you for that correction. And I noticed a lot of our conversation focused specifically on credit cards, but it does affect fuel cards as well. And the assumption that I have, based on what the policy says, is that fuel cards are to be used for official county business and county business alone, so. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion with regard to policy sixteen dash twelve? We have a motion from Deputy Whitstock that we approve the revised policy, county credit and fuel cards. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, so I'm gonna ask the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Olson. Appreciate you being here and helping us with this this morning. The next item on our agenda is six point two. Mr. Nyman, welcome. And anytime you're ready, Will.
So today I'm bringing the policy sixteen, or sorry, sixteen dash six, the additional named insured policy. At the council meeting on the fourteenth of May, we were instructed to develop a policy enabling community organizations to join the county's insurance. This policy will establish the guidelines and criteria for these organizations to be designated as additional named insured under the county's insurance policy. The county currently has other ANIs, Swallow Community Hall Association, Hesketh Community Hall Association, Neehill Adult Learning, and we also now have Lunch with Friends. So, yeah, and then the policy. There is no financial impact on premiums charged by the county because we will charge them back to the organizations. There is, however, some staffing implications just due to the fact that there's increased. We'll have to require paperwork, we'll have to draft the agreements with them, we'll have to do the renewals for them. We are going to be the go-between, between the insurance provider and the organization.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions regarding the policy for additional named insured? This was our request that we develop a formal process for determining who we would add. So are there questions? Counsel Phobes.
So we're required to have our minutes given to them, so if their board approves that they want to do this, do we require them to show us their minutes that they approved in that meeting?
Through the chair, we, we require a letter from them saying that they approved it. We don't, normally it's not minutes, but it is a letter signed by the organization president saying that they have approved the quote and...
And then I guess I have a second question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Which would involve if this becomes a burden on our staff, do you have an idea or have you started to look at what it would cost the organization for us to be the go-between? Because eventually that's gonna happen, so will we have a rough idea of what that might cost an organization if they're choosing to go this route?
Through...
Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Chair, thank you. The, we've not, we've not determined a cost on this. We're not anticipating that this is going to be, to be a burden. This type of approach is actually pretty standard across municipalities. From previous experience, it, this hasn't been a burden any other place that I've been. So we aren't anticipating that we'll see that. If it is, you can expect us to come back to council and say that, hey, there's, there's something we need to look at here.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Counsel Christie.
Just, I'm gonna throw you a curveball. So I'm chair of the Troschu Hall, which is in the town of Troschu. The comment I got when I reviewed insurance this season was that RMA has better insurance than UA. Do they have, does the property or the organization have to be on county property or does, can it be in those urban areas?
So you're saying RMA is, insurance is better than AM's and so you're wondering if they actually have to be physically located within the county?
That's my question and that came from somebody that's looking after the RMA.
Who cares to tackle that one?
Through the chair, I can, I can tackle that one. So if you look in the policy guidelines here, you don't have to be, as long as you're providing service to the residents of Neehill County, does not have to be in actual county. However, I do have in the policy here that any community or nonprofit organization utilizing facilities owned by another municipality are required first to request insurance coverage from that municipality prior to submitting any request to Neehill County.
Boy, did you open a door.
So it's about ownership of the facility and so in, in the case of perhaps the Troschu Community Hall, that's not owned by the town of Troschu, is that correct?
That's owned by a society and, and it services Neehill County as much as the town. I will be talking to insurance later.
So we might have to go back to our previous discussion about how much time this is gonna take for specific organizations. Counsel McGee.
I, I, I agree. It makes me laugh, but at the same time it makes me nervous. I think this is a policy that we have to really take heavily into heart about where this could grow and how it could grow beyond being able to handle. I think we need to have real clarity on who can and who can't and I can't imagine that we can meet the need of as many people who would love to do this. And I don't like the risk because it does affect our policy should something go wrong at these organizations. Is that not correct?
So first and foremost, I guess, Mr. Hogan, you did clarify that you would come back if necessary, if this became a administrative burden, that it would, council would hear about it. What's the impact on our county insurance if an additionally named insured, or we have a lot of claims from additionally named insured? Because they're paying a separate policy fee from ours, how does that impact us? That's, I assume that's your question, Counsel McGee? So can you help us there? Mr. Nyman, go ahead.
Through the chair, getting a straight answer on that one has been a little bit difficult. They are going to be on our insurance, that's very true. However, when we talked to RMA in the twenty years of providing this service, they never, never encountered any ANI claims affecting the premiums of the municipality.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel McGee.
What does that mean?
Through the chair, honestly, I, I'm not gonna get a straight answer from anybody on that question. I'm not, they're not going to tell me directly if something major happens at a community hall of how much it's going to affect our insurance.
So, but what they did say is that in twenty years, any claims by an ANI has not impacted the insurance premiums of the hosting municipality.
Yes.
Okay. Counsel McGee.
So council, I have to argue that, or point out, we just come back from a conference that just has spoken about people's fear of civility in our regions. And though we are fortunate enough to have one of the best group of residents to work for that, after hearing the story as well, are we very fortunate here? So please don't assume I'm saying anything different than that, but I also feel that we have a responsibility of building these policies for what could happen in thirty years, not just today. And I think that the quote of there hasn't been impact at this point is fair, but I also think this is a tool that has not been utilized all that much. So our per cap use of it is probably quite low compared to what this policy's going to allow, and so I'm not trusting that statement as any form of security whatsoever.
Okay, so Counsel Christie.
Just a comment on the harassment and discrimination thing. My private insurance company for the Troschu Hall wanted a signed document this year that we have a policy in place, and that's never happened before. They also want an operator's manual for that building. And I went, probably a good piece of policy that we should have, it's more of the job description of the caretaker, but still, they're asking for far more documentation than what we've had before.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Penner.
So an association that I've been part of has been, had this for multiple years, many, many years. And I think the burden on staff will be whether they return their yearly forms, the requirements, you know what I mean? And that could be the burden, then you gotta make the phone call. But if, and if that becomes an annual thing where you're chasing up somebody, well, we, staff needs to visit with those organizations. But I mean, some organizations can get insurance cheaper elsewhere, so if this is cheaper, it's here for a reason. But I think my, my thoughts are the burden will be if they're not sending back the paperwork to the county each year.
And there's nothing in this policy that says Neehill County must allow someone to be added to our policy as an ANI. So if there are situations where we're concerned, there is opportunity for staff to use discretion and for us to trust our staff in, in using that. And so certainly, are you thinking, Counsel McGee, that you're looking for an alteration to the policy that's in front of us to be more specific around organizations that might be eligible for insurance or, I'm not sure what you're asking for, so I'm just seeking some clarification. Counsel McGee.
I'm not sure what I'm asking for myself. Just what scares me or concerns me is some of the requests we had recently, we were not well aware of the ownership and the governance behind those organizations. We could have said, said yes to something that really I think is not in our sandbox. And so I'm not sure that we've clarified the qualifiers well enough by saying not-for-profit organizations that own or operate facilities in Neehill County, because I think we need to know their governance, ownership as well, specifically for those examples we had not that long ago. And I'm sure there were other examples like that too. And I, and how to word that, I'm not sure, but I don't think we're, I think we're still open to be requested. And is that good enough that we can say no, but just by knowing that? But I think that's a weak policy if council has to come up with that as something that they're talking about.
Okay.
Did that make sense, Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Hogan, go ahead and then Mr. Nyman, you, if you, you had a comment.
Through Mr. Chair, yeah. I wouldn't, I understand the, you know, the term to, I would, I don't know that it uses the term weak policy, but we had, in going back here, if, I guess it comes down to, if council feels that the policy is too broad, then that's part of a discussion that I, that I think we should have. If the, you know, right now, all of, as the policy's written, all of these requests do come back to council for, for your consideration, which as has been stated before, you're not under an obligation to say yes, so you, you can say no. If you did want to, if you did want to narrow the sc... If you did want to, if you did want to narrow the scope of the policy, then you do have the, the opportunity for that discussion. Where if you're saying, okay, well, these, these types of things may apply, these ones, we're not interested in those, those types of discussions. Depending on how heavy you want to get into that, this may be the format, or it may be referring this to a committee or, to a committee of the whole for that discussion.
So, I guess, in my mind, I think that I'm hearing council say that they're not 100% sure that they would like to move forward with this policy the way it is. I think there's some question about, can we get further clarification from RMA in terms of the instances that have happened in the past that may or may not have had impact on the ANI's insurance? And what that has resulted in for the organization that's their host? Perhaps we need to look at more qualifiers under the organizations requesting that insurance? And perhaps we need to further define, I'm hearing that maybe we might like to look at organizations that are operating in other municipalities and whether or not we're wishing to provide ANI insurance coverage to them. So, would it be reasonable, suggest, that we take this back to a committee of the whole? And Teresa, I see your hand, so would you like to comment and add to our discussion?
Yes, if I could, through the chair, thank you. I think we have to be careful that we don't get too prescriptive within the policy because we don't know what we don't know. So, new organizations pop up all the time, and they'll be coming to the county potentially for insurance. And so, when they come to us, we do a deep dive into the organization. We look at their articles of incorporation, we look at their board, we look at their minutes. We get a very extensive application from them, I think it's eight pages to 10 pages long. That, all of that information then goes to RMA for review. They do a deep dive review of the organization as well to determine whether the risk is something they want to accept. At that point, we bring it back and we create a request for decision, and we bring all of that information to you for, to decide. So, my fear is, is that if we get too prescriptive in the policy, we'll end up potentially having challenges around, well, why did you do that? Or what is our criteria? What is our clear and direct criteria? And we may not know that based on where we are in our current state. Additionally, I agree that this could create some risk around staff time. But in our current state, the staff time is maybe 10 hours a year, so it's not significant. But should we get to a place where staff time becomes significant, we would certainly come back to council with a request for a fee to be added to the county for this. So, in our current state, I don't see this as high risk. And if I'm thinking about risk in the county, this isn't one of our big ones. This is probably low risk, and it is a big support for our community members. I'm not saying there's no risk, but it's not significant, so, thank you.
No, that's good clarification, and thank you for that. I appreciate you jumping in. So, does that help? Like, to me, I guess, I sit here and I look at our organization as a whole and our staff, and I have a lot of confidence in staff and in their ability to filter and bring us information. And thank you for that clarification. Are we prepared to go forward with this? Or are we asking for an opportunity to have a more fulsome conversation? I guess that's the question I'm asking us, and I'm also mindful of the clock and the patience of a certain lady who's waiting to talk to us. And I know she's good, so, so I guess I'm, I'm seeking clarification from council. I'm looking for your direction. Are you happy to move forward at this point in time? Or would you like to, an opportunity to have a more fulsome discussion and look for more information? And if so, what information? Counselor Penner.
I'm happy with what I see here, and I like your clarification, the different levels. And it does take a bit of time to get approved. We used to go and we did it, so I'm happy with what I see. And I would make the motion if, is anyone else got any discussion before I make the motion?
You certainly can make the motion, and we can have more discussion after that motion if you wish.
I'll make the motion, that council approved policy 16-6, additional named insured policy as presented.
Okay, so, we have a motion to accept and approve the policy as presented, 16-6. Is there any further discussion? I want to make sure that you've had opportunity to have the discussion that you feel is necessary. Any further discussion? Do you feel you're at a point where you're ready to vote? Counselor McGee.
Yes, I, I, I really do appreciate the input, and I feel much more comfortable, thank you.
So, with the clarifications that we've received, we are now ready to vote? Okay, I'm not seeing any further discussion or any further concern, so I'm gonna ask the question. All in favor that council approved the policy 16-6, additionally named insured as presented? All in favor? Okay, and that is carried unanimously. So, thank you, Mr. Nyman, Ms. Cochran, Mr. Hogan, for your assistance in helping us to make that decision. Our next item on our agenda is one we look forward to every year. And that is, we have a delegation who is here to present Neheal Regional Family and Community Support Services Annual Report. And welcome, Shelley, Ms. Jackson Berry. We'll give you a minute to get organized and set up. And then, we'll start the timer.
Can we wait for 10 minutes before we start the timer? Just to be honest, at least I'm not competing against the Oilers like I was last night at two presentations.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna comment on that comment. However, we're always happy to see you, and we look forward to hearing what you're bringing for us today. So, welcome, Shelley, and whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time, council. So, this is just a summary of 2023 and the world of Neheal Regional Family and Community Support Services, which was our 25th year of operation. So, many things had changed. Locations have changed over the years, and the way we deliver programs, and the way the board funds things has changed. But certainly, the one thing that has not changed has been the real strong regional partnership to really focus on the social well-being of area, of area residents in all six municipalities and their drive to make sure that it's locally driven. So, that has not changed. In 2023, the Alberta, as you guys know, it's a partnership between the province and the municipalities. And in 2023, the province contribute, increased their funding. That's the first time they have done that since 2016. So, it was welcomed by the board with open arms. It wasn't the full amount in 2023 because of the difference in years. So, the overall last year was 3.38%, and then this year, Neheal Regional FCSs from the province will have that 4.5% increase. Lots of municipalities always have to decide whether they will accept that because they have to increase their, their percentage. But certainly, in our region, excuse me, the six municipalities have oversubscribed to this program since 2006. So, that even made it much easier just to welcome the extra money into the bank account, so. Output, outputs in 2023, the number of individuals benefiting or served by the program is, is, has increased over the last few years. So, so you'll see that our volunteers and volunteer hours are down a bit. That one ebbs and flows a lot as we go through, depending on what we're delivering, what we need volunteers for. And then, the programs that we externally fund impact that as well. As you know, we support individuals, families, and community. That's the focus of FCSs in the province. So, the individuals section there, for outputs, our family wellness workers, their caseload was at 108 for ongoing clients, which is much more manageable when, where they have been the last couple of years. So, that's very good news. I'm sure that there's a number of contributing factors. Certainly, one would be our Neheal Community Support Coach trying to support in, from some of those youth, children and youth at that more preventive level. So, the family wellness workers could really more focus on the early intervention work that they do. Majority of the referrals for that program were self-referrals, so 44%. And we always take this as a very positive sign. A, their, their presence is known, people know to access them, how to access them. And we also know it increases the chance that the, whoever they're working with is gonna follow through in accessing the service. So, I think that speaks very highly to the staff that work in those programs, the connections with the school, and their visibility out in the community as well. So, so that was a positive, a positive output. Children and youth programming, I mean, part of that is the Neheal Child and Youth, sorry, the Neheal Community Support Coach. But we do run some other programs, of course, for children and youth, but, and you guys already had an update all on that. Our Community Volunteer Income Tax Program, I mentioned this every time, we had 334 particip, or tax returns that were completed, bringing over $2,300,000 in benefits and credits back to residents throughout this area. This program has just steadily, steadily increased over the years, showing that need and how important that service is for people who have struggled to get their taxes done. Because we know it can make a huge difference in them accessing the benefits that they need. Already this year, we have done 359, so already the number has gone up, and the year's not over. We find that sometimes people are trying to get into Neheal Housing, and they have to have a notice of assessment. And so, if someone hasn't done their taxes, Neheal Housing sends them over to us so that we can get that in line so that they can start that process. So, that's just one of the things. If someone's applying for senior benefits, they have to make sure that those are done. So, those numbers increase throughout the year. So, yeah, that program is providing a huge benefit. At the top, you can see the outcomes, outputs are really important. We wanna know the, the number impact we have, but we also wanna know, so what? So, what is different in people's lives? So, we focused on resiliency, self-esteem, competency optimism, optimism, and that capacity to meet needs were the ones that we really focused on. And for us, a passing grade is 80%. And as you can see, all of them were in the 90s. So, we still use all of that data to tweak and change programs as we see necessary. And the other one, that particularly for this one, because there's quite a few numbers, outputs that go into this one, is that there was over 1,400 respondents. So, it wasn't just a small sample size that made a difference there, it was a much larger one. So, supporting families, we know the research is there that supporting families is absolutely essential in overall well-being for individuals, families, and communities because that impact just grows, overflows immensely on that. Our Neheal Community Family, our Neheal Family and Marriage Counseling Program has been in existence for many years. I don't have it, I think it was 2002 that the program started, so it's been around a long time. And in 2023, that program supported 43 families or couples. We really focused on the relationship part of it because that was something that was a huge gap in our area. And we are finding that people needed to go to larger centers for that. A lot of times, they were paying for it, and so, taking time off work. And when we started this program, I think therapists were about $125 an hour. They're about $225 an hour, which is a huge barrier for, for families. So, anyways, we're seeing some good results there. Just one, one of the comments, the counselor has helped me and my family deal with situations so much better. It was a great positive impact on our lives, and as a family, we couldn't be more grateful. And someone else, thank you for coaching me so many times. When this blended, blended family could've fallen apart, we struggle, we struggled, but we're doing much better now. So, those are the sorts of comments we're hearing from that program that's impacting relationships, which, again, we know are essential for overall well-being, but they are messy. So, tools for school, our numbers, 39 backpacks, their, that was down. We're not exactly sure, it's been the lowest we've had in a few years. Whereas, when I talk about trends in a minute, yeah, it doesn't match with that, but, so I'm not sure. So, we'll certainly be doing some more advertising around there to make sure people know that that is out there. Parent education, we know that that plays an important role and that parents are absolutely essential in the lives of making a difference for children and youth. So, the, the board took some of the extra money from the province that we didn't expect and put it towards parenting programs. So, yeah, and we try and connect it back with what we're seeing through the, our programs and then also our family wellness worker program. So, one would be, we've seen a huge increase the last two years. Our highest numbers were anxiety and stress. So, then, we were trying, we would run programs that were connected to that. So, we ran the Fear Less Program. We're seeing some high conflict separation and divorce. And so, trying to access the Triple P Transitions Program that will support families to try and make that a little easier for everyone involved. And so, we're always trying to pick on the types of programs that can make a difference there. Supporting community, that one, it's, it always feels like it's a bit of a mishmash there. Information and referral steadily has gone up over the years. And that's another thing we sincerely appreciate. When you are regional a program, that can be a real difficulty when you have a central office. If people knowing how to access it when you live out in Huxley, right? To know where, where those services are at. So, we really appreciate, we know that lots of that is happening because of municipalities making sure that there's awareness out there that these services and supports and how to connect with them. And inviting Neheal Regional FCSs things to things like ratepayer nights helps make a huge difference for us because it's connecting us that these are the supports that the municipalities provide to their residents. So, so that, we are pleased is going up. Back to, I guess that's, and again, outcomes for all of them are listed at the top. And we have tweaked, you know, again, we utilize that information to tweak our, the work that we do and that ebbs and flows. So, another thing that fits in this one is that, is the work we do around volunteerism. We know that the, one of the most important factors is people contributing to their community and how that makes, because we used to always focus on how that makes the community stronger, what it, which it does, how much it helps the people that, if you're volunteering to help someone in particular. But really, the research is there that their true benefit is the person who volunteers and really enhances their overall well-being. So, doing our best to try and support volunteerism through the six municipalities is something that we're also focused on. So, some of the trends that we, that we've seen in 2023 is an increase in referrals to Alberta Supports and food banks and, and furniture banks and, and food, sorry, the clothing bank up in Troschu, all these things. So, I mean, it's certainly sending us a bit of a sign that some of those basic needs are a bit of a struggle for people. And that isn't changing, unfortunately. FCSs funding cannot be spent individuals on that. So, a lot of our work is trying to connect people to most of the services and supports. We always make sure that their taxes are done, so at least they're getting the benefits they can through that. So, the, those are some of the trends that we are seeing around the financial end. One of the other things we've seen in 2023 was a large number of requests for people phoning us for was a large number of requests for people phoning us for counseling. So if they could, we could meet the needs by utilizing our family wellness workers or our family marriage counseling program. We always did, made those referrals. If not, making sure that they were getting connected to other services and supports, whatever that might look like. Again, I think this is wonderful. I mean, because the more people are reaching out for support and the sooner that they do that, the less likely we're ending up with people in a crisis situation. And that is what Nehehal Regional FCSS is all about. So anyways, we again, want to create that awareness of letting people know that the supports are available and it isn't always $225 an hour, that there's other options out there. The other trend that we talked about, again, I'm sure you guys know all about it. I don't need to say anything but housing. Last year, we've seen more and more people phoning us for housing. And they're just, there's just really nothing available. And it's a real struggle. I just had someone call last week. Eight people have jobs in our area and don't know where to look. And well, and there's just nothing available for that, which is, which is difficult, right? Which real has a spin-off with that economic development stuff is we have jobs and we want people to work in them, but it's hard if there's no place to live, which I think is, is province, if not nationwide. So that's one of the things that we see. So yeah, I mean, Nehehal Regional FCSS is really focusing on what the research is showing us, that contributing, volunteering makes a huge difference to your overall well-being. The importance of social connection and social and relationships is also essential to your well-being. But sometimes that needs to be supported, because it's not as cut and dried as we like to think it is. And then really, that connecting to, supporting families can have a huge spin-off on overall well-being. So twenty-five years, and I think this program has really, has made some difference in lives, I guess. I have been around for a little bit of it. And one of the things that I guess I will go back to is, is I've always appreciated this regional board. Sometimes I hear stories about regional boards that can be a bit challenging. But this one, I mean, the whole time I've worked with this organization, the six municipalities sit around that table and truly have the best interest of all the residents, the social well-being and all the residents in this area. So they're a breeze to work with and very supportive of what the staff is proposing and suggesting. So greatly appreciate the support from all municipalities. And the, again, overwhelming extra financial support makes a huge difference for what we do. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. As always, informative and appreciate your coming and being here with us today. I thought for sure we were going to get a formal request to have the Nehehal County Representative replaced on that board. But I'm happy to hear that didn't happen. So are there any questions or comments from council regarding Shelley's report? And again, as always, Shelley, thank you. Counselor Cunningham.
So first of all, thank you so much for all the work you do. I know it's a challenging time with the economy and things happening in the province. And like you say, housing and some new things, some challenges that maybe we haven't seen in the last twenty-five years. So thank you for all the work that you and your staff do. So Reeve King and I had spoke briefly about this. We have a large population of seniors in Nehehal County. In fact, I might be mistaken, but I think it was our most growth in the last year. So I'm just looking for a little bit more information about the services that are provided within the region for seniors. There is a couple of us that do sit on Nehehal Housing. So that's, they're always looking for information. So just wondering, what would be the best way for us to get that information? Would it be best to go through you? Or is it best maybe to have Seniors Outreach come and do a presentation? Or what do you think would be the best way for that?
So certainly in our area, the Nehehal Regional FCSS Board has chosen to support, because we're birth-to-death, has chosen to support seniors through funding Seniors Outreach that now, you know, now covers the full area. And so, I mean, I certainly have a small bit of knowledge of what they do because of the reports that they send. So I can give you a bit of a snapshot. But I think if you want to drill down deeper, then certainly connecting directly with Seniors Outreach. So, and then we do some things as well. I mean, probably, I should have looked this number up. I would say the majority of people that we do through our Community Volunteer Income Tax Program are seniors. So we're impacting that financial end. And again, helping them access extra, you know, so again, they go to Seniors Outreach to get help with forms, but they end up at us because they need to have those taxes, tax returns filled out to be able to access all of the benefits. And then a lot of the housing as well, as you guys are well aware. So we impact it there. We do run a number of programs that we tend to have quite a bit of uptake from the seniors and that preventive end. Like they're open to anyone, i.e. our just-in-case program to assist people in, you know, putting all their documents together in one place in case of an emergency. But we tend to find that that mainly is seniors. We're very connected with the dementia-friendly community. So there's lots of movement happening around that to support those who live with dementia in our area as well as their caregivers. And we have, I would love the opportunity to have council participate in our dementia experience. Sixty minutes of your life that will be altered. So a lot of that preventive stuff. We work with that committee that has an amazing group of volunteers and runs programs through the volunteers in a number of our communities. So, and then again, we have Fountain of Health, you know, so staying well, like those are the sorts of things that we would focus on that would also impact seniors. And then Seniors Outreach, really, probably the biggest thing that you see on their, on their docket of what they do is assisting seniors with completing forms. So if someone phones our office and says, I need help filling out an Alberta Senior Benefit Form, we just send them there, because that's what, one of the things that we fund them for. So they do a lot, that's a main thing of what they do. They also would provide services. They do the Meals on Wheels for those who engage. And they've had a couple of grants for that. So they've made it very affordable for seniors. And then certainly, that social connection. So if you've seen some of the stuff happen, particularly over Seniors Week last week, lots of outings, again, to try and create that social connectedness with seniors. Because we are seeing more retired people move to our area because they can sell their house in the large center, buy something out here and still have some money left over. And so certainly, when, you know, we pop into some of the senior centers, I meet lots of people that, who, yeah, we moved out here a year ago. So, and when I say why, that's what they always say. So anyway, so important to create those connections. And so they do a lot of that as well. So, but, you know, they have a little bit of caring calls, right? So people who are living on their own, they have a bit of that social connection. Don't think the numbers are too high there. And then, of course, the transportation. Like truly, we are very fortunate on that area. Their Caring Cars Program. They do focus on sixty-five and over, but the amount of times people need appointments, and it's usually often medical appointments that they need to get to. And the Caring Cars makes a huge difference there. So that's only a quick snapshot. But, and if you would like a bit more, I think probably Seniors Outreach can tell you for sure. Dig a little deeper.
So one of, just to follow up on your comments, Shelley, is a deliberate choice that the board has made that we would provide the majority of seniors services through Seniors Outreach. And so we do contribute significantly to their budget each year. And that frees us up to focus more on the front end preventative with children and families and try to, but we also provide a lot of services throughout the year to seniors. And certainly, that income tax program is one of them for sure. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Counselor McGee.
You all know, I like to get on a soapbox about the importance of FCSS, and here I go. Thank you, Shelley. I, again, have to thank you for the stats and the clear information. We've just come back from the federal conference and the growing numbers of homelessness and need that is, is just astounding and sad what municipalities have to deal with. I'm so proud that we are part of a region that has done a very proactive job of caring for those things. And I think, you know, I know one of the key phrases in your field is evidence-based programs. I would love to have the university come and write down your program as evidence-based. I just think that we have lots to be proud of here. And in my mind, it is such a clear way to get closer to a balanced budget as if our higher governments would see when you put some money into preventive and work like you were doing, it goes a long way in saving money and keeping us much more physically responsible. And I'm grateful that they've gave you an increase. And I am hoping that increase remains year after year, because there isn't a better way to spend money, in my opinion. So again, thank you. And thank you to all our partners who make this happen, because it is truly an outstanding way. Our world could be a better place.
Thank you for that. Are there any other comments or questions for Shelley before? Sure, go ahead, Counselor Cunningham.
So this actually might be more geared to administration and something maybe that can come back in the future. But one thing that came to me recently was, I don't think a lot of people in the municipality know that Nehehal County owns the building that Nehehal Regional FCSS is housed in. So when I look at that municipal contribution of one forty-seven and change, it was asked to me, does the county, is there a portion of that is provided a gift and kind? Because I mean, there's rent, there's yard care, there's obviously building maintenance. Like, is that built into that budget? Is it built into our budget? Or how is that reflected? Because that isn't necessarily a financial contribution, but in essence, it is. But it is certainly a significant contribution. And I do wonder sometimes if the province is aware as well of that contribution that Nehehal County provides.
Mr. Hogan, or who would care to tackle that one? Mr. Hogan.
Through you, Mr. Chair. A number of the functions that are provided by Nehehal County are either not charged or absorbed within our overall budget. So when we provide IT assistance, as an example, that's just the thing we do. There's no, there's no capture of that in the contribution to FCSS. Likewise, there's no rent, there's no monthly rent that we send over that FCSS has to pay. So the building costs, the lost revenue, I guess I phrase it that way, the opportunity to, obviously, we're not losing money, because we're not charging the rent. But that's money we could be charging that we're not. So I think council knows what I mean there. The, none of that's included in the contribution that we make financially to FCSS.
So the only comment I would make to that is, as the board chair, certainly, maybe Nehehal County doesn't get a lot of acknowledgement for that. But from the management point of view and trying to operate the FCSS programs, if we were paying building rent and a whole bunch of other things that's provided by Nehehal County, we would not provide the kind of programming that we do. And so certainly, as the board chair, I sit there every meeting that we have and we are having these conversations. And we don't have to look at that overhead side on the rent side. And we just have to deal with what we have as far as staff and programming is concerned is very much appreciated. And so perhaps, there needs to be an acknowledgement of that in some formal way. But certainly, I know from Ms. Jackson Barry's point of view, as she's trying to do budgeting and all those things that she needs to do to keep the board happy, that she definitely acknowledges the support of Nehehal County on a constant basis, whether it's payroll, whether it's, I have a question about whatever the resources at Nehehal County are available to her. And I hear that appreciation all the time. So thanks for asking that question. And it's something that we do need to acknowledge. And it is acknowledged constantly, I know, at our board meetings. Yeah, the public really doesn't hear that. And, but certainly, if you ever ask Shelley, is Nehehal County ever helping you in any way? She would say absolutely and constantly, because she has regular questions about different things. Any other comments or questions? If not, I am going to say thank you to you, Shelley, for being here today and for presenting your annual report to us as council. I hope you feel that you've had opportunity to be heard. And certainly, you know you're always welcome. So thank you.
Thank you, guys, and thanks for letting me having the clock at my back.
I'm much more flexible here, aren't I, then? Thank you again, and enjoy the rest of your day.
Yeah, no, the program, well, well done, so thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Okay, at this point, I'm going to suggest that we take a recess. We'll be in recess. We have a public hearing at ten. So I'm going to suggest we're in recess until that public hearing at ten. So if you... Can you not hear me? There we go. I'd like to remind the public that if they wish to speak to the bylaw, that they register their name on the speakers list. There will also be an opportunity, when I've gone through the speakers list, that I will ask one final time if there's anyone else present who wishes to speak. At this point, I would like to introduce all the members of council today, starting from my farthest left, Counselor Penner.
Good morning, Debbie Penner, Division Two.
Good morning, Faye McGee, Division One.
Good morning, Carrie Phillips, Division Four.
Now that my mic's on, Ken King, Division Seven.
Morning, Jerry Whitstock, Division Three, the Acme-Linden area.
Good morning, Lauralee Michelle Cunningham, Division Five.
Good morning, Wade Christie, Division Six, I'm on the northwest.
All right, I guess we'll give opportunity for our senior leadership team to also introduce themselves, so Mr. Hogan, if you would.
Good morning, Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Good morning, Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services.
Good morning, Mike Zira, Director of Infrastructure.
Good morning, Teresa Kaufgren, Director of Corporate Services.
Okay, thank you. Today's public hearing process will follow according to procedural bylaw 1846. A copy of the procedures is attached to the package, and additional copies can be found at the recording secretary's desk. I will now ask our Planning and Development Department to come forward to make their presentation. And welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan.
Good morning.
Welcome, Ms. Hazelton. And anytime you are ready.
Okay. All right, this is the public hearing for bylaw 1900. We advertised in the Three Hills Capitol on May 22nd, May 29th, and June 5th. Notifications were sent out to adjacent landowners and referral agencies, and it was also posted on our Neill County website, as per the MGA, MGA Section 606. The purpose of this is to reconsider the redesignation of portions of the Southwest 132925 West of the Fourth, Plan 8610569 Block Two, from the Ag District to the Local Rural Commercial District. The purpose of this redesignation is for the, for an event venue with the focus on rustic weddings. This is a summary of the project. The land is, again, located at Southwest 132925 Plan 8610569 Block Two, and access will be from Range Road 251. The site is south of Highway 575 on Range Road 251, for approximately two miles, and is southeast as the crow flies from the Village of Acme. The aerial indicates the proximity to the Village of Acme, and the yellow star shows the location we are discussing today for the redesignation. The applicant's residence is not included in the redesignation. Further more information on the summary of location, the intent of this application is to allow the Quonset structure and designated area to be used as an event venue for the weddings, family reunions, et cetera, with camping available only for guests. The capacity of the venue will be approximately 150 people. The venue will be called Ravens View Acres, Inc., and the parcel is, in its entirety, 13.15 acres, with 2.29 acres to be redesignated to the Local Rural Commercial District. And the aerials are just showing you the procs on the left, where it is in Neill County. The middle is the area as it sits, and then on the right is the area to be redesigned, to Local Rural Commercial, with the remainder staying as Ag. Planning considerations, the municipal development plan, so in the municipal development plan under economic, objective number five, this is to attract visitors to the county through a development of the tourism and recreation destinations, attractions, and services. Another part of our MDP in the economic is goal number two, to create opportunities that will provide a variety of development options that will diversify and strengthen the county's economy. Planning considerations, out of Land Use Bylaw 1808, Section 20, application for an unlisted similar proposed use, where the proposed use is not listed in the land use district, it will be considered a discretionary use, and the municipal planning commission may consider it to be listed, if, in the opinion, it is sufficiently similar in the character and the purpose listed to use within a subject district. And the other section we're considering is Section 101, which is the Local Rural Commercial District. Special events venue is not listed as a use, however, accessory uses are listed as a discretionary use. Other planning considerations that we're considering are type and scale of the proposed use, suitability and site of the proposed use, compatibility with surrounding existing and future land use, proposed access and impacts on road systems, emergency access, adequacy of parcel size, consistency with statutory and non-statutory plans in Land Use Bylaw, and the need and benefits of a development to the community. This is the Local Rural Commercial District that we are proposing for redesignation. If successful in redesignation, details and specific conditions required for the development will be dealt with through the development permit process. So this is just giving you a view of what your permitted uses would be for that area and discretionary uses. Here are some site photos. This is showing that a portion of the Neahills Creek does go through the northwest portion of the parcel, and it does lie in its entirety in a significant historical site of paleontology. It does sit in a level-five CSI or CLI, not CSI, sorry. Agricid landscape is granger and the agricid soil is two H A ten. The H on the left indicates adjacent homes to the property within a half mile. And we, just to note, we haven't received any comments. And then this is an overview of showing the area of the proposed designation. So here we are looking at the property from Range Road two-five-one at the top left. Top middle is the parcel's north property line. The top right is, the star indicates the approach off Range Road two-five-one. We're standing at the approach and we're looking south from the approach on the bottom left. We are into the property in the middle of the bottom and looking at Range Road two-five-one to the south and the north. And then the right bottom is looking north from the approach. So here, the stars indicate the location on the right, so where we were standing and taking the photos, and the moon is the indication where we were standing to take the photos. So this would be the camping area, looking north and south. And here is the one ceremony location that they will have. So again, the star indicates where we are. And here we are standing at the proposed parking area. They do, I'm just gonna turn on my laser. The applicants have indicated. Okay, it's not working. On the bottom right, there will be a walkway to go from the parking to the barn ceremony location as well. Laser's not working, that's why I would point that out, my apologies. Here we are looking at the second ceremony location and the quonset. So again, the stars are the ceremony location and then the moon is just showing the quonset area. Star again and moon area, so the star is the fire pit area and the moon is the overflow parking, the green bins to be converted to a bridal honeymoon suite, and then just more of the overflow parking. And then on the left, we're showing the setbacks to the railway. So it is recommended from Transport Railway. That the recommended setback for the new residential to a railway is thirty meters, so they are definitely well within those parameters with that there. Again, the star indicates where we are looking, and this is the additional area that they've included for future expansion if required. And then this is just an overview of a blank aerial and then an aerial showing how it will be laid out. And finally, we did receive no letters in opposition or favor. We did have a note of concern from Transportation. Mr. Mike Sierra commented that the application ensure that the parking be limited to the parcel and not extend into the county road right of way. And that would be something we would deal with at the development permit, just as a note.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Does council have any questions for the planner? Counselor McGee.
Just for clarity, I'm not understanding how we have the space, your second ceremony location that's separate from the rest of it. Why do we not have a connecting piece of land for the walkway? Should that not be all considered the same development together as the same, as a use of land for this?
We could put it in. They're not congregating there. They would be walking to the area for the ceremony and back. But if it's something that council wishes to have, we could have that put in.
I guess I'm not understanding why you would or would not. Can you clarify why you wouldn't have that there?
Because they're not congregating. So it's just a kind of like a walkway to get to the location to have the ceremony and then they would walk back. But if it's the preference that you would like to see something like that added, we can do that.
I guess my only comment with regard to that would be kind of like trying to herd cats once you, if you had an established pathway. After having spent time in public institutions like the university and Olds College and they have laid out beautiful sidewalks and people go pathway of least distance or what seems to them. So I'm not sure having a designated alleyway would necessarily work anyway.
Yeah, so again, they, you know, it's just a walkway. They're not congregating. It would just be to get to the ceremony location and back. However, if it's council's preference that you want that added, it's something we can entertain.
Okay, any other questions for the planner? Okay, Counselor McGee, you're good with that? All right, I guess this is the opportunity where the applicant has, since you're here, welcome. Appreciate you being here. This is your opportunity, if you wish, to add anything. So is there anything that you would like to bring forward as part of your application?
It's separate from our little presentation?
No, it would be related to this request that you're making. Okay, well, come forward. Come on forward. So I'm gonna assume you're Brendan and Laura.
Yes, good assumption, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. So first, before I jump in, I did wanna touch on the traffic note. Because there are farm fields all around us, that would, we would just never allow that. When it came right down to it, there's farm field, like tractors and equipment and stuff going, and that could impede others that live and work in the area, so that, we just wouldn't allow it. It would be dangerous, to be honest. Yeah, okay. So we just kinda wanted to touch on how much work we've done and kind of our networking and homework that we've been doing over the last year to get to this point. I think the first time we met with the girls was probably over a year ago before we actually submitted an application for the land redesignation. There was a lot of cleanup on the property. We wanted to make it a little bit more realistic in the photos, that it's something that could be accomplished. And you'll see by the photos kind of why we chose to wait a bit and do cleanup. So just kind of off the top, both Brendan and I come from the event world, the hospitality world, equestrian competitions. We both met kind of at Irvine's, which is, if you're in the horsey world, you know Irvine's. It's like the tinder of the equestrian world. So that's where we met and it was kind of like an instant connection. I think within the first like month of conversation, we knew we both kind of had the same goals in life in terms of working on our own property, having those venues or events, whether it was horsey things or weddings or whatever the case may be, but kind of in that public spectrum.
So when we first were looking for properties, one of the goals that we had, one of the requirements was that we would have a property that we would have the ability to open up a venue. And that is something when we saw this property come up for sale, we ensured that we were the first to arrive to see the property and we were the first to put in an offer. And we, before we even pulled in the, in the drive, we knew that this was the property. And we've been searching for about a year for a property that we could do this together. So we could have a business that we operated as a family from our home, that we could invite others in to have a comfortable spot, that they would feel like it is their family home. And that's, that was the goal. And this has been years of work with my wife and I to get to this point.
And as I said, both of our backgrounds have kind of a little bit of everything. I used to work in the financial sector. But on top of working in the financial sector, I also did events and planning. The biggest one being a seven-hundred-person Christmas party for one of our financial institutions. Everything kind of in between from there. Brendan has also run his own company in terms of timber framing and building homes. So knows the administrative side of that entrepreneurship as well as the actual work that will go into some of the features on the property.
Yeah, and with the, with the timber framing, that's something that's classic and timeless heritage carpentry skill. And that's something that we feel would add to the aesthetics of the property. It would make for, for that feel and that look that people who want to come out and have a wedding or a family reunion, those kinds of events. It would give that authenticity to it.
So as I said, I wanted to wait a bit, or we wanted to wait a bit for cleanup to happen before we took pictures. This picture was taken, I think, probably within the first couple months of us moving in. At the end of August, as you can see, there's another random structure there, some heavy equipment. All of that stuff has since been cleaned out. Kind of redid some of the fencing in front of the barn. Again, this was all stuff we took off the property and have since cleaned up. Just part of it, really. We have effectively calculated and taken out over twenty-six tons of garbage off the property. So in conjunction with the event space, we wanted to try and be as naturalistic as possible. And obviously, a lot of this was greatly hindering just the beauty. Honestly, there wasn't really any birds on the property when we first got there, because it was just so chaotic and you could feel that energy. So we've spent a lot of time this past year cleaning up. That quonset you see on our right was actually full six-feet-high wall-to-wall with stuff. As mentioned, we wanted to use our own buildings. We did have Daniel come by to do an unofficial inspection on the building before we did the application to see if that was something we would have to tear down and rebuild or if it was to code, that we could just, you know, re-shingles on the roof, make it pretty, that sort of stuff. And luckily, it was good to go. So we are happy that we can keep the current existing quonset for the, essentially, the reception space, the wedding. The goal is kinda to have, you know, everyone wants that family member that has a really nice property that you get to borrow on the weekends and for weddings and parties. And that's kind of the feel that we're hoping to have with our property. Is your aunt and uncle way out in the country, that's, you know, it's only forty-five minutes from the city, but everyone thinks it's further. You can go rent there and, you know, have that kind of private space. You can't see it from the road. You can't really see your neighbors. It's, it's nice and private. It gives you that seclusion of your own kind of mini farm for the weekend. This was our wedding. We hosted our own wedding on the property, so we were our own guinea pigs, basically. We did learn some things, for sure. This is the ceremony space as option one behind the barn. Definitely understand the point of having the walkway designated as well, which is definitely something we're absolutely fine to put in. Also considering people might want to take pictures in front of the barn. It is not included in the land redesignation because it is over a hundred years old. So if we were to rebuild it, it would have to meet today's code of standards and not necessarily the heritage barn standards. So it is more of a backdrop, any picture opportunity as opposed to having anyone go through it or around it. Because we do wanna keep it as its heritage features. This was the, the quonset lit up with the DJ going on the inside and people hanging out in the backyard where we will have, the, the fire pit is kind of to the right out of view there. That was the quonset, once we have cleaned it all out and set it up for our wedding. So it's, again, not completed, not done, and we were our guinea pigs, like I said, but it definitely pulled it off for us. And also in the last year, we have been having a lot of conversations with people in the county. We have networked a crazy amount. We have florists from Linden Store, a couple photographers, excuse me, one out of Acme, one out of Yerkan, a little bit out of our range there, but close to the county. We have a couple makeup artists out of the county that have kind of come on board. We also already have a wedding commissioner who's ready to jump in. So we've kinda, we've kind of made it so that people can go to our website, once it's up and going, and hopefully get the thumbs up, that every service they would need for their wedding is right there and can be staffed essentially out of someone who is living and working out of Neahill County. So I said to, we have two photographers, two makeup artists, florist, DJ, the wedding commissioner. We also have a pianist and a vocalist on board, decor rental companies. And we have also done all the groundwork and gotten all the quotes for all of the work that will be required on the property before people can physically come in. These are just stock photos. We didn't magically build a new barn overnight, I promise. This is just, just for color reference and the sharpness of it, if you will. This will actually be the color scheme of the quonset, so it will be that ranch red with the black roof. So very striking, very much that rustic farm feel. And for the big ceremony space beside the quonset area, with, again, with the timber-framed archways, benches, things like that, this is kind of that similar vibe. Obviously, we will have that fantastic cooly view in the background as well for that. Yeah. And that, that is our show. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that. First, let me say welcome to Neahill County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love your enthusiasm.
Thanks.
Your dream, and so appreciate you being here and bringing what you are hoping and dreaming and planning to do.
Appreciate it.
I am going to give council an opportunity to ask questions at this point in time of the applicants. Does anyone have question or comment? Sure, Counselor Phillips.
It's more of a comment. I always appreciate when new people will come to our county and bring their ideas, because it really is great. And the fact that you're making it more inclusive to the people that live and work around here, that is a win-win all the way around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what I also actually love too is the fact that we are super close enough to the city that, you know what? Maybe someone comes out here and says, you know what, this is where I can call home.
Yep.
That's important to me as well.
Hundred percent.
People, so thank you for this.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council for the applicants? I'm not seeing any. I think we're, we're not letting you off the hook easily, because I think you've done a very good job of presenting what your dream is.
Thank you.
And certainly, looking at the photos you've provided of the before has indicated you've done a lot of work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just thank you for being here today and thank you for coming and sharing your dream.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As the formal part of our hearing process continues, normally I would be sitting here saying, I will now call on individuals as they appear on the speaker list. But if you look at my speaker list, there is absolutely no one on that speaker list, so I will not do that. I will, I guess I, I know there's at least one other person in the I will, I guess I, I know there's at least one other person in the room, and I would ask if anyone else is present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw, please come forward. And since, yep. Since I don't see anyone wanting to do that, we'll go on. Does council have any further questions either for the applicant or administration? All right. Are you satisfied, council, with the amount of information you have received before I close this hearing? Okay. I would like to remind everyone that once the public hearing is adjourned, no further information shall, on the matter, shall be received by council. And since no one has any further questions, I now declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion to go back into the regular council meeting. Deputy Chief Whitstock, so moved?
Yeah, so moved. Move back into regular council.
Thank you. All in favor? And that is carried. So again, Laura and Brendan, thank you for being here with us today and good luck, and we wish you the best. I think it's in next meeting, council meeting in June, that we actually would do our second and third readings of the amendment. So good luck and thank you for being here. I'll ask council, does anyone need a break or are we good to continue? Okay. All right. The...
Hey, good luck.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is, looks to me like 8.1, which would be disposition of delegation in public hearing business, Neahill Regional Family and Community Support Services So any additional comment or question related to the Neahill Regional presentation?
I'll just speak through the...
Go ahead, councillor Penner.
I sure appreciate Shelley coming in on a regular basis, and today was a much more upbeat than it was back in the COVID days. So I think infusion of financial assistance, when we were asked that, has made a difference. And I like seeing the numbers that people are taking, not advantage, but taking advantage of the services that are offered, not just for families and that, but also on the senior side. So once again, thanks to Shelley and her staff for all that they do.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other question or comment? If not, go ahead councillor Cunningham.
So just further to my comments, I would just, I'm not sure in what format we do that, but I would just like to see whether that's from seniors outreach. Because the money that we give as a municipality does include seniors, I would just like to see some statistics on the numbers that we're providing services for seniors, so however that would look.
So we have a request for seniors. Specifically, are you thinking seniors outreach then? That's generally where the majority of those services are provided, although we do provide some internal as well.
Yeah, you do have the community tax program, which Mr. Jacksonberry kind of highlighted that majority of that would be seniors, but yeah, just because a portion of that allotted money that we as a municipality give to FCSS is then transferred over to seniors outreach or whatever entities are providing those services, I would just like to be able to have our ratepayers know the number of seniors that we are providing services to through that outlet, if that makes sense.
I guess I'm looking for Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Chair, if you wanted to, we could do up a simple motion for, for that request. Do you have administration request dislikes from seniors outreach and FCSS regarding seniors support?
Okay. All right. So councillor Cunningham, am I hearing you make that motion?
Yes.
So we're requesting administration to bring, I guess, statistics specifically related to the work being done by FCSS and seniors outreach and the impacts it's having on our senior population.
Well, and whether that would be to whether it would, if it would be easier, more beneficial to have seniors outreach come and present to us, and then we'd be able to, you know, have the opportunity to ask questions, however that you feel folks feel that would look like.
Okay, so if we give direction to administration to reach out to those organizations and perhaps request a delegation from seniors outreach?
Yep.
Okay, so councillor Cunningham, since you're going to own this motion, does that address your request? Okay, sure, please.
Yeah, and I think just a little bit further to that, from what I hear in the senior population, just like we hear about families and children, life has gotten, gotten a lot more comprehensive for seniors due to the economy. We're seeing a lot of seniors now house their children and sometimes their children's children. So I think the world, as we know, has just gotten a little bit more complicated. So I would just, we have such a large population of seniors in Neahill County, so I just really want to make sure that we're seeing the picture of what's happening for them in Neahill County. So with that, I will make the motion that council direct administration to request a presentation to council by seniors outreach regarding their programming and statistics.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, any further discussion or comment related to the motion that's currently in front of us, that we request a presentation to council by seniors outreach regarding their programming and outcomes, statistics? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried, and we probably will need to remind them that it's a 15-minute delegation. They are enthusiastic and love to share what they're doing, so. Okay, so we also, any other direction or comment related to the FCSS delegation that was here? And if there isn't, I would look for a motion to receive that presentation for information. Councillor Phobes?
I'd make the motion that council receives for information, the Neahill Regional Family and Community Service, sorry, Support Services Annual Report and Presentation.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to receive for information, the Neahill Regional Family and Community Support Services 2023 Annual Report and Presentation. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Just, I have a comment or maybe a question for administration related to some question asked by councillor Cunningham. Is there any way that we can reflect the contribution that's made in-kind by Neahill County towards that program in the reporting that we do to our ratepayers? Like in our ratepayer newsletters or in our report to ratepayers, like the brochure we just developed for our ratepayer meetings, just to help them understand that our contribution is much larger than just a financial one. It is financial, but it's not, we're not writing a check, I guess, so. Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Chair, I think the answer is yes. Through the, you know, we can do that in, in resident newsletters. The other area that I think we can do that in is the, the year in review has not been finalized yet, so I think there's still potential to add that in there. We're probably not going to get, we don't have a market rent on that building, so it's tough to say what we're, what that in-kind contribution is. So we, we, that would be a bit vague, like there wouldn't be a specific dollar figure attached to that, right? But we can mention that we, we provide a, we provide a free rent and IT support and some of that stuff in a, in a general sense. The, the year in review might not be a bad place to do that, because in the future, we could also do that with some of the other programs that council's considering at this time.
Okay. I just think that the general feeling that I got from us as council earlier today, that it is important that we acknowledge the contributions that are being made, and we're, we are providing a facility, we are providing IT support, we are providing accounting and financial support, we are doing a lot of things in the background to facilitate that program, and that really reflects the support of council for what FCSS is doing, but it's just a way, again, of saying this program is important and we acknowledge that, so. So councillor Christie.
Part of that is, and we appreciate the service that that generates very, very much.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any further comment? We do have a motion on the floor. Mr. Hogan, is that enough direction as far as that request to include that other information, or do you need a formal motion?
The, I think that motion would suffice.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on in our agenda, we are now at the point in time where we are at council and committee reports, 9.1, FCM Conference. A number of us spent some time in Calgary from Thursday of last week through till Sunday. So would you like to make comment on what you experienced there? Councillor Phobes?
Thank you. So when I go to FCM or any of the conferences, I always find that the best value is, is the interactions with other councillors across our country, especially in this one. It really does go to show that we're not alone with the issues we're currently having in this province. It exists all across Canada, and that was made very clear from the people that I spoke with while we were at the conference. There is an awful lot that's not happening to us as councils, but the public's social media and the attacks upon the regular, everyday people who've decided to run and sit as an elected official, that is not an easy job. A lot of people think that we're not really doing a lot, but there is a background that says, I'm still a mom, I'm still a human being, I'm still a person that sits in this place, that wants the best for my community, but I don't want my community to attack me because I made a choice that I thought at that moment was the best for everyone concerned. And so we do have to take a little bit of a moment to remind the public that we are people and that we do have emotions and feelings, and sometimes the decision we're making that we think is the best, maybe you view it in a different way, but it could be the, what we tell the public as well for the information that they need to make those decisions clear. So, yeah, thank you.
No, thank you for that. Anyone else wanting to comment? Councillor Cunningham.
So my FCM experience got a little bit...
Shortened?
Shortened due to a family emergency. Everything is well now, and thanks to my fellow council members for all the well wishes for my family member. So in the short time I was there, again, all of, all of the experiences that we have, a lot of times it always comes back to me to the networking, it was kind of like what councillor Phobes said. Everybody you talked to, we're all facing similar challenges. There might be a few differences, but a lot of the same. Councillor Phobes and I met a mayor from Nova Scotia, and I think, well, some of us sat with him and his wife at the dinner on Sunday night, they were lovely. We talked quite a bit at length about healthcare, and it just felt like we were talking about our own community. And we've talked about this before, whether it's Alberta, Canada, like councillor Penner mentioned, Australia, like we're all facing the challenges attracting and keeping doctors and medical staff. So, you know, you could be on this side of the, side of Canada, you could be on the Far East side, and yeah, a lot of the same challenges. So financial pressures, a lot of them are the same, the pressures from their own province or pressures from the federal government. And so, yeah, it, it's just really interesting to collaborate and kind of, you know, bounce things off other people. A few of us attended the rural and northern and remote reception, and again, it was amazing. We had some really great entertainment from Nunavik there, and again, just to talk to the people, I mean, not only the rural, but the remote communities, the unique challenges they face. So, so yeah, just a great experience. Did get a chance to go to a little quick reception with TC Energy, so kind of interesting to see what they've got going in the province, and we welcomed them to come on down to Neahill County and chat with us. So, yeah, so no, it was just great. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Okay. Any other comments? Councillor Christie?
One of the comments that really caught my attention is that tourism has a better, a bigger financial impact in Canada than agriculture, forestry, and fisheries together. That surprised me.
There's so many, we, so many items we could talk about, and so it's really hard to stay concise and, and within it, but I, I wanted to share that same stat, so thank you councillor Christie, though I think that's a very exciting and important thing for us to pay attention to as we move forward. I also wanted to bring attention to the fact that FCM has done a lot of work with our, now I'm forgetting the word of it, I should have wrote it down, but anyhow, they want to be sure to canvas for predictable funding sources for both province and the federal government. They brought a lot of attention to the fact that the systems in place for how revenue is generated down to municipalities is for still, was designed in the 1800s and is not serving today very well. The way our world works is very different than then, and so things such as housing and so forth were highlighted because of the infrastructure being the problem. So housing isn't just, we need a shelter for someone to reside in, it's also all that that means for the municipality for that. And I looked at the report that they had given us, and I, I thought this is an interesting stat that I would share, that the average building for a home, a housing unit building would require approximately $107,000 invested by the municipal assets that require for that home to happen. And yet, and we as municipalities are the ones left shouldering those costs. So I think that's a really, I think, you know, that probably varies according to municipalities, but that really does show the astounding shouldering that this housing problem is giving to our infrastructure that is aging and also is a problem, just, just in that way. And to know that municipalities do own 60% of all public infrastructure across the nation, and so that's a, that's a huge burden with little revenue source coming this way. So please be aware of that when we look at how we canvass and, and look for supports in other ways. And when we look at our budget and how we may be criticized for the various ways that we have money set aside, it's for real good cause. Infrastructure needs to have a lot of savings put to the side for us, so that's why we have the reserves we have. So it really came home. I also attended a couple events by Rogers, and their connectivity and wanting to bring the nation to connectivity is very high. They have some new innovation that's coming forward. They did get a lot of pushback from people saying, hey, yeah, you've said this to us before. What... What's that going on? But I, I saw a lot more excitement and hope, and, and I am encouraged to see what might be coming out of their presentations there, so.
Okay, thank you for that, and I guess I get the last kick at this cat. One of the things that I spent a fair amount of time focused on while I was there, both on the trade show floor and in conversation with other municipal leaders, was around waste and waste management. And it's very interesting to me to note that throughout Canada, landfills and waste and how we deal with waste is a topic of conversation in every municipality as well. I did have some fairly productive conversations with a company called Sustain and another one called Claystone regarding what they're doing with waste. And the Claystone people provided me with the stat that they're taking a million tons of garbage a year into their facility, and they're able to recycle 35,000 tons of that. They're composting 35,000 tons. So out of a million tons, they're just recovering 35,000 in terms of compostable material. They're also getting some recycling and stuff, but they are landfilling the remainder of that one million tons. I talked to the company Sustain, and they're doing a much better job in terms of recovering and generating power and a number of other things through their process, but they're still ending up with some landfill. And most of these companies aren't dealing with what I would call the awkward consumer products, so demolished buildings, mattresses, furniture, those very big, clumsy, a lot of those things are still being landfilled. So anyway, very interesting conversations, and one that I think that's very important that we as council are going to have to have very, very soon, and I look forward to that appearing on our agenda. The other thing that I am going to comment is the same thing as Councilor Phobes referred to, and that is the tone of civil conversation or conversation around politics and municipal concerns is no longer civil in Canada. It's become, it's fallen down to a much lower level of conversation, and it was distressing to me to see how many councillors, elected municipal officials who are just absolutely being terrorized, is probably the right word, by everyday citizens in Canada. And it seems to be almost acceptable. It's almost like this is the normal course of doing business. And to me, that's a conversation that needs to be had soon and quickly with all of us to say, you can agree to disagree, but you don't have to be disagreeable. And the term that they used that caught my attention was awful but lawful. And so people are treading that fine line, they're behaving lawfully, but they're behaving awfully. And so it's, to me, it was, it was good conversation, and I enjoyed, I mean, I met people from all over Canada, and you hear similar stories to what we have, you hear similar problems and similar situations to what we're dealing with every day. And so it's just refreshing and encouraging to have those conversations, to realize we're all in a similar kind of boat, and there are people out there who understand and sympathize, so. So that was good. I am done, so go ahead, Councilor McGee.
Thanks for bringing that up. I, to me, that was very impactful, and it was brought forward throughout the conference every day in various ways. And first and foremost, I wanted to add to that because I think it needs to be mentioned so that our residents know that a lot of that is within council to council members, and we have a very exceptional group here on the table where we are civil and we work through things quite well, and I am just so proud of all of us for being an example to Canada where that hasn't always happened. The other place that we're a strong example, that makes me very proud, is the regional work. I had heard many examples of where council to the neighboring council were not well, in good source of each other. So it's not just resident, it is also some of the elected officials using their, their place with other elected officials. And so the big message of what they were trying to give to us is we need to unite together, municipality to municipality, and I think we have a great example by our regional. There were, I told people about our regional partnership, and people were astounded that that existed. And so I, I just want to, again, thank everyone for us to, to continue moving forward on that partnership. I think it speaks heavily to the times and is a good preventive measure to, to keep course. I also don't want to have, have us lose the fact that they also spoke heavily about, it's not just the elected officials that have these problems, it is also the staff. And that we need to be treating staff equally great and vice versa, but also that we need to promote that our residents need to treat our staff with respect and civility. So again, generally speaking, when we hear some of the other stories, we are in a beautiful, beautiful area, and I want us to maintain that and maybe even make us greater.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Christie?
Just to follow up on your discussion on the waste and the partnerships that are across the country, all, we've talked to several municipalities that have been successful in doing their programs, all of them said you can't do it alone, you have to have partnerships, and you have to really follow that. I mean, dig into what you want and what they need and work together.
Very true. Thank you for that. Councilor Cunningham?
I just was thinking about Mayor Judy Gondak from the city of Calgary. Mr. Zer, you might get a kick out of this, but it was kind of cute, because twice I heard her speak on Sunday, I think it was. She said, I guess the best time, if there is any good time to have a major water emergency is when you have about 3,500 elected officials from across Canada in your city, because they understand and they know that things happen, maybe not at the right time or right place, and so it was, it was, I, I appreciated that from her, because obviously, you know, having water restrictions when you do have this, I mean, we were not the only convention in town during that time, so they did handle that with, with grace, and so, yeah, yeah, good wishes to them going forward, so.
Okay. If there are no other comments related to FCM, and there are no other council and committee reports, I would accept a motion to accept for information.
No, sorry, I was just going to comment further on the water, but it had nothing to do with FCM. We, we, we currently are hearing from our ratepayers in regard to bulk water stations and the lot, the long hourly, two, three-hour waits to fill their bulk systems, and so I just wanted the ratepayers to know, we are acknowledging, yes, we understand, it's frustrating, and it is not just industry, it is our own agricultural producers as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, yes, thank you for letting us know, calling in that there are issues with the amount of water that is available at our bulk stations.
Yeah, a lot of the comments I've heard around that has been around the amount of time that they've spent waiting to get filled. And one of the comments I made to an interested party was, you know, he was, we should be restricting this for strictly ag, and the point that I made is that the industrial users who use our bulk water stations on a regular basis are sitting in the same line as our ag users are. And so they're used to being able to drive up, fill, and go, and so they probably are feeling some sense of frustration as well. And it's the time of year that we're in, and so we all have to be working together to make that system work to the optimum. Unfortunately, it means at times we are going to have to stand in line, so, and that's unfortunate, so. Okay, so any, Deputy Reeve Whitstock?
Well, if there's nothing else, I would move that council accepts the council and committee reports for information as presented.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And because we have a Century Farm Award presentation at 11:00, I am going to suggest that we are in recess for five minutes until that opportunity presents itself, presents itself. So we're in recess till 11:00.
So it's 11:00 AM and I will call our council meeting back to order. And the next item on our agenda is a Century Farm Award presentation to the Sept Farm. So, Neahill County has a Century Farm and Ranch Award Program. It is designed to recognize families who have continuously owned and actively operated the same land within Neahill County for 100 years or more. Hence the Century Farm. To qualify for this award applicants must have already received the Provincial Alberta Century Farm and Ranch Award for the land in question. And when applying, the applicant can choose the preferred method of presenting the plaque. And the Sept family has chosen Nathan and Audrey, welcome, to be presented at a regular council meeting. So, welcome here today. So, today we are pleased to recognize the south half of 63225 west of 4. A piece of land that was purchased by Jacob Schaefer in 1892 and maintained by his family ever since. The current landowner, the late Vern Sept, is honored posthumously through this award. And his nephew, Nathan Sept, who's here today with us, and Audrey, of course, who completed the application, will receive the plaque on behalf of the family. And we welcome you here today. And your cheering section. So, we are going to take advantage and have a photo opportunity. And we've had a little conversation about this and we're going to do that outside. So, we're just going to recess briefly our council meeting. We're going to step outside and I'm going to carry this plaque carefully. And we'll present it to you outside. So, let's do that. Okay, so it's 11:09 and I'm going to call our council meeting back to order. And just again, I just want to express appreciation to Vern and, or not Vern, but Nathan and Audrey, who are here on behalf of the late Mr. Vern Sept, to accept that Century Farm Family Award and just congratulate them on that achievement. Counselor Hopez?
Because we're a little bit of a straggler, Laura Lee and I, I'm sorry, Counselor Cunningham. They did mention that this was one of Vern's last requests is that he have that. So, I love that we were able to help that.
Thank you for that. Okay, the next order of business, it's funny how you get to do a celebration and then right back to business, but that's where we are. The next order of business is council follow-up action list. And, so, Mr. Zier, because you haven't heard from me at least for a week or two. I happened to spend some time in Huxley last night watching my granddaughters play baseball, three out of four of them, or three out of five of them, I guess. And I noticed that we have no notifications up in Huxley currently for the wastewater management meeting. And in order to facilitate the maximum number of participants, I think we need to get that there sooner rather than later if we could. We had talked about on the community bulletin board by the mailboxes, on the ball shed, and perhaps the door of the community hall. So, just if, that'll make it easier for people to know that it's coming. Just a request. And on a brighter side, we have two new streetlights in Huxley. Installed yesterday, I believe, so, yep.
Through the Chair, we'll ensure that those notifications get put up in those three locations as well. It's being posted on social media and through the Three Hills Capital as well.
Okay, I know it seems like we have a lot of time, but that's coming really super fast. It's two weeks away, I guess, and so. Anybody else? Counselor Hopez?
So, if you're looking for the maximum amount of people to show up, would it be possible? Because I did this for our ratepayer evening in Torrington and the cost was very little was just to make a flyer and stuff it in each of the mailboxes in Huxley. So, you know you're covering the people that actually live there. I want to say all of Torrington, which was 100 in sum, was $19. It was very reasonable for an eight by 10 sheet of paper.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions on council follow-up action? Counselor Cunningham, please.
So, just to confirm, the motion 55 about the three country markets. If I'm understanding via social media, those three country markets have now been canceled. Is that correct?
Mr. Gannon?
Thank you through the Chair. Yes, that is correct. We, we didn't get the uptake as, as indicated from council and unfortunately, from what I understand, it wasn't even close. So, we're going to use the allocated funds to survey, as indicated through council, through the RFD, to see what that potential need or want is from the community moving forward for potentially next year's opportunities.
Deputy Reeve had a call that he needs to take, so we'll excuse him for a couple of minutes. Any other, Counselor Cunningham, please?
More of just, I want to highlight motion number 94 about the ratepayer evenings. So, just so people are aware, we have our first ratepayer meeting tomorrow night in Sunny Slope from 4 till 7. And then Thursday, June 20th, from 4 to 7 at Three Hills Community Center. So, just so people are aware, and we welcome everybody to those excellent meetings and an amazing meal we always have. So, come one, come all.
Okay, any other questions or comment? Counselor Hopez?
I noticed, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you the exact number, Mr. Hoken, on the airport hiring the person, I see that it's been delayed at the moment. Could you just explain to me, they weren't able to find somebody?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the, it's actually a timely question because I just got an update on that during the meeting this morning. So, there's, I guess the short version is there's, there's some stuff that ourselves in the town have to follow up with, with Prairie regarding that position. So, based on that, that update I got this morning, we're obviously going to have to reset those timelines, but there's a bit of other discussion there that probably I shouldn't go into right now.
And are they, I saw in some communication that there's possibility of a delegation coming to council from Prairie. Is that potentially happening?
Through you, Mr. Chair, on a, on a different topic. My understanding is that they, I think they've applied for the delegation and they made their request already. Yeah. So, they'll be, they'll be appearing before you, but that, that request is regarding a, the request is regarding a requested water line upgrade to the airport.
Okay. And if nobody else has anything else, I have just a question with regard to our own facility here. I know we had talked about potentially having some landscape and other work done. This is the landscape and other work time of year. I'm just wondering if there's an update for council on what's happening there. Mr. Gannon?
Yes, thank you through the Chair. So, at the moment, they've done some weed protection on that and some spraying. They're looking at some design opportunities to remove that gravel and to redo the landscaping. We might be bringing forward some options to council as well. If the design is going to cost additional funding that we can't handle through our operation. Right now, our operation team is, is ready to move on it. Depending on some factors, they're looking at some shrubs and some trees and some shading and aspects within there to work on some beautification as well.
Okay, so that's anticipated, it could happen almost any time then, or?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Counselor McGee?
It's not specifically listed, but I know we're in the process of doing the mowing of the ditches for the weed management that we've directed you to. Have you completed that throughout the county or you're still going region by region and what to expect? And the one reason why I brought that up, which I'm sure you were already, it's been through my division and many phone calls of people being concerned that we're not managing things the correct way. And so, I just thought it would be good for us to review what we can say to our residents because there will be phone calls when they do hit your division.
Mr. Gannon, please.
Thank you through the Chair. Administration has received a lot of comments and concerns from residents with regards to the program. But as, as soon as we do explain the weed control aspect of it, it, it comes into light to, to understand what the effort and what we're trying to accomplish. We do have some of the ratepayers that won't agree with the program. However, we, we find that we are moving forward with it efficiently and effectively and it's doing as what we've expected to do. There's been some concerns with phone line issues, some issues with, with individuals wanting the land for grazing opportunities. So, we've talked about those individual programs in there and that it, the areas that we are mowing are, are rateaways and we have to maintain them and ensure we're not the cause of the spread of any adverse effect weeds from the area.
Thank you for that. I think it's also important to note that this initially was set up as a one-year pilot and will be reviewed and there's likely, possibly, might be some alterations made to the way that program is approached. But certainly from what I've seen, the company who's been doing the mowing has been diligent. They've been getting the job done and certainly they've made progress for sure from what I can see. Any other questions or comments, council follow-up action list? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive. Counselor Cunningham?
I move that council receive for information the council follow-up action list as presented.
Okay, so, thank you for that. We have a motion to receive. The council follow-up action list for information as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. So, the next item of business on our agenda is closed session under third-party business, section 16. So, at this point, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Christie?
So, moved.
So, a motion is that we enter closed section under section 16, third-party business interests. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. All those in favor, and that is carried unanimously.
Okay, so we had a motion to come out of closed session and return to open session at 1:18. We recessed briefly to allow the return of the gallery and to return to open session. It is now 1:19 and we will resume our meeting. There are no motions related to the third-party business section 16 discussion under FOIP. There are no motions from the closed session. And so we're, unless there's any other items of business that need to be discussed, seeing none, I am going to say that we are adjourned at 1:20 p.m.